Welcome again to the Mesa City Council meeting for December the 8th of 2021. I note for the record that all of our council are present with the Vice Mayor joining us via Zoom. Council chambers are open to the public and we will take comments in person. Also, you can provide comments either over the telephone or the Internet. You can find multiple ways to participate in this meeting on the first page of the council agenda. We'll begin our meeting this evening with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'd invite you all to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda today is the appointment of Holly Mosley as our new city clerk with an effective date as of January 28th of next year. We are all very excited. Holly has a great tenure with our city clerk's office and went through a very challenging interview and recruitment process, and so we're just very pleased that she will be joining us in that position. Counsel, is there a motion to go forward with that? Thank you, Ms. Billsbury, seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please, Counsel, cast your vote. I don't see that coming up as an item on our prompter, so we'll do a voice vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead and make the motion electronically if you would. There we go. Actually, Mr. Thompson beat you to it and made the motion. Let's see who seconded the motion. Mr. Freeman made the second. All right. At some point, we might activate Julie's pad, depending on how she's voting. All right. I will vote too.
And I vote aye.
Oh, okay. Well, there's a spoiler. Councilmember or Vice Mayor voted aye, and we have a unanimous vote. So congratulations, Holly. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. We're going to invite Mr. Christopher forward to read the consent agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a Councilmember or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 3, approval minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 4A, Act on Liquor License Application for St. Clair Winery and Tasting Room, one-day event, January 15th at Riverview Park, 2100 West Rio Solado Parkway. Item 4B, Act on Liquor License Application for St. Timothy Roman Catholic Parish, one-day event, January 21st, 1730 West Guadalupe Road. Item 4C, Act on Liquor License Application for Superposition Farm Incorporated, one-day event, December 31st, 3440 South Hawes Road. Item 4D, Act on Liquor License Application for Georgia Leadership Foundation Incorporated, one-day event, January 15th, 2100 West Rio Solado Parkway. Item 4E, Act on Liquor License Application for Mesa Drummer Bar and Grill, 1211 North Country Club Drive. Item 4F, Act on Liquor License Application for the Lounge Social House, 1457 West Southern Avenue. Item 4G, Act on Liquor License Application for Organic Bean Cafe and Wine, 40 North McDonald. Item 4H, Act on Liquor License Application for Beer World, 1530 North Country Club Drive. Item 4I, Act on Liquor License Application for Bocci Italian Bistro, 8830 East Germain Road. Item 4J, Act on Liquor License Application for Dolce Vita, 5251 East Brown Road. Item 4K, Act on Liquor License Application for Arizona Cantina and Cachina, 5609 East McKellips Road. Item 5A, Act to Ratify Emergency Purchase of Three Dispatch Phone Devices for Public Safety Communications as requested by the Mesa Police Department. This purchase is funded by the Regional Dispatch System, enter governmental agreement with the town of Queen Creek. Item 5B, Act on Contract to Purchase a Software Solution for the Department of Innovation and Technology. This purchase is funded by the Arizona Department of Homeland Security, 2021 Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Program. Item 5C, Act on Contract to Purchase One Water Tanker Tender for the Mesa Fire and Medical Department. This purchase is funded by 2018 Public Safety Bonds. Item 5D, Act on Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Tires for the Materials and Supply Warehouse for Fleet Services and Mesa Fire and Medical Department. Item 5E, Act on Contract to Purchase Two Street Sweepers for the Transportation Department. This purchase is grant funded by the Maricopa Association of Governments and the Local Streets Fund. Item 5F, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Non-Mechanical Water Meters for the Water Resources Department. Item 5G, Act on One-Year Term Contract with Four Years of Renewal Options for Temporary Water Treatment and Water Reclamation Plant Operator Services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5H, Act on Contract for Fire Station Exhaust Systems Project, 16 locations. This project is funded by the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant and the City of Mesa Capital General Fund. Item 6A, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Office of Justice Programs Grant Contract to Accept Grant Funds That Will Be Used by the Police Department for Personnel and Other Program Costs Associated with the Development of a Comprehensive Approach to Address Hate Crimes in the City of Mesa. Item 6B, Act on Resolution Extinguishing a 20-Foot Public Utilities Easement at 1810 South Crisman Road to Accommodate a New Mixed-Use Development Called the Falls at Crisman Commons. Item 6C, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into an Intergovernmental Agreement with the Arizona Department of Water Resources for the Regional Water Use It Wisely Campaign. Item 6D, Act on Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Enter Into Amendments to Various Agreements for the Development Commonly Known as the Grid, a project on city-owned property generally located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Pomeroy, at 233 East Main Street and 34 South Pomeroy, and granting an option to purchase the associated land and air rights. Item 7A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ANX-21-00799, Anexing Property Located West of Sausman Road and North of the Warner Road Alignment. This was initiated by the applicant. Item 7B, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON-21-00798, for Property Located West of Sausman Road and North of the Warner Road Alignment, Rezone with Planned Area Development Overlay and Site Plan Review to Allow for an Industrial Development. Item 7C, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON-21-00566, for Property Located West of Power Road on the North Side of McDowell Road, Rezone with Planned Area Development Overlay to Allow for Development of a Single Residence Subdivision. Item 7D, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON-21-00892, for Property Located at the Southeast Corner of Power Road and Warner Road, Modification of the Planned Area Development Overlay and Site Plan Modification to Allow for Commercial Development. Item 7E, Act on Ordinance Amending Title 5 of the Mesa City Code, Chapter 4, entitled "Mobile Food Vendors", to exempt mobile food vendors who are operating in special events from licensing requirements on a limited basis, and to modify requirements for the location of mobile food vendor operations, including distance requirements and related exemptions for operation in or near areas zoned for residential use. This will be effective March 1st, 2022. Item 8A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON-21-00540, for Property Located on the Northwest Corner of Signal Butte Road and Elliott Road, Rezone with Planned Area Development Overlay, Aside Plan Review and Special Use Permit to Allow for Commercial and Industrial Development. Item 8B, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Enter into Development Agreement relating to approximately 25 acres of property located at the Northwest Corner of East Elliott Road and South Signal Butte Road for the Primary Purpose of Prohibiting Certain Land Uses. And Item 9A, Act on Subdivision Platte Menlo Circle Located South of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway and East of Gilbert Road. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we have a request to remove Item 6D from the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
And we have a blue card to speak on that?
We have two blue cards to speak on that, and that's the only item that was...
Thank you very much. Then with that exception, I see we have a motion by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson for approval of the consent agenda. Please cast your vote. Vice Mayor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Before we move on to Item 60, I do want to note, and I should have done this earlier, I'm very pleased to welcome to our meeting tonight the members of the Mayor's Youth Committee. This is a group of juniors and seniors from all of the high schools in our city that come together and donate some time to learn about our city. They learn from city staff and they participate in other educational events throughout the school year. And then the program culminates with them giving us some feedback, which is, and the perspective of teenagers in our community is not something that we, I think, get as much of as we should. So this is a very valuable program for both, I think, the students that participate in it, but the city as well. There's a lot of ideas that comes out of this program, that have come out of this program that we've implemented in our city. So if you don't mind, students, would you please stand up just so we can recognize you and thank you for participating in this program? Thank you very much. Thank you. And we know you've got finals and a lot of homework, so we won't be offended if you don't stay for the whole evening, okay? All right, next item is items that are not on our consent agenda. And as was indicated, Item 6D is no longer on our consent agenda. I think we're all familiar with this agenda item. This is authorizing the City Manager to enter into a development agreement for the development commonly known as the Grid, located at 233 East Main Street and 34 South Pomeroy, and granting an option to purchase the associated land and air rights. I have cards from two individuals that want to speak on this. First is Kathy Adams. Kathy, are you here today?
Now, Mayor, since it's been postponed, I'll withdraw my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Good to see you again.
Mayor, Counsel, it's not postponed.
Kathy, we are voting. I'm not sure what you heard. We are voting tonight. Oh. Okay. Okay.
Let me introduce myself and first thank you for allowing me the privilege of being up here to speak to you. I'm Kathy Adams. My sister Pat was supposed to be here and give me some support, but she's probably gotten lost. I'm president and owner of Pete's Fish and Chips. And Pete's Fish and Chips has been here in downtown Mesa for as long as I've been alive, 51 years. I mean, 71 years. I'm sorry. I wish I was 51. My dad, Pete Grant, started Pete's. I'm only here to protest the buying or the amendment of Pomeroy Street off of Main Street for the Grid. I've been given, suggested to me that it wouldn't be affecting Pete's Fish and Chips, but it would be terribly. I don't know what the plan is for the bank building that's right behind Pete's. I don't know what they're going to do for their ingress and egress, their parking lot. I don't know. But if any of you have seen Pete's Fish and Chips' drive-through at 12 o'clock any given day for lunch, dinner 6 o'clock any given day, we might have 25, 30 cars in the drive-through. Right now, we're utilizing the piece of dirt lot as our drive-through entrance, and the cars drive through the dirt lot, turn left on Pomeroy, and then go into our drive-through. If the little Pomeroy Street gets deleted or whatever the Grid has planned for it, I don't know where the bank customers are going to access the bank's parking lot. If they're coming down Pomeroy or they're coming down the Gateway Park Street that now runs parallel to Pete's Fish and Chips, that's going to be a big problem. So I'm just here to say that whatever the Grid decides to do with that little Pomeroy Street, it's not going to work out good for Pete's Fish and Chips. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and take that into consideration for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I think, why don't we go ahead and address that right now, if you don't mind? What is the plan? Is Pomeroy Street somehow being...
I guess that's the question. I don't know what she's been told, but I think we need to correct some information here, so...
Kathy, thank you. I think your time is up.
I just want to introduce my sister, Pat.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being such a big part of our city for so many years.
We have Jeff.
So Kathy, we're going to ask one of the staff to respond to the question you raised.
Mayor, Counsel, Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation. I'm not sure what information has been provided, but I want to be very clear. Pomeroy Road is currently closed as part of the construction effort and will be, as part of the Grid development, completely rebuilt to a new surface, actually an improved urban, more of an urban model that will have a better streetscape. So it will always remain a public street, and at the completion of the Grid project, Pomeroy will function just as it has in the past.
That was my understanding. Okay, so the plan is Pomeroy will remain a public street after the Grid is completed?
Yes.
Okay.
Off of Main Street?
Yes.
Yes.
So they'll access the bank?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Exactly as you are used to Pomeroy, that's how it's going to be reconstructed. It's just going to be with a different streetscape.
Good.
Trees, different trees, things like that.
They're buying it. Is that right?
They're not buying the street.
Mayor, Counsel, it is remaining a public street. They are not buying Pomeroy.
Good. Thank you.
But now, there will be, I'm sure, some disruption during construction, and so that kind of teases up for the next speaker. But we're going to move on. Next, we have Chris Loffler has requested to speak on this item. Chris, good to see you from Caliber.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Chris Loffler and the CEO and co-founder of Caliber. To date, Caliber's invested approximately $25 million in cash into downtown Mesa and the transformation that's going on down here. Big believer in your city and what you guys have done so far. And on top of that investment, we have made commitments to invest close to 80 million in the next year. So not only in the construction that we're doing, but the fact that we're funding additional housing and additional projects that we have coming in, that some are public, some are not. I'm here today to talk about the letter that we sent all of you. We have, because we're such a supporter of the downtown and as the owner of the 305 Main Street Building, some people call it the Wells Fargo Building, we have been a cheerleader for any improvement to downtown Mesa. Having said that, two years that we've seen this street be basically dirt has affected our ability to lease our building. We've been vacant for the entire time we've owned it. It is a very challenging building to lease when you can't give a final date to when the dirt road behind our building is actually going to be accessible. In addition to that, we only found out after a meeting with the city many, many, many times, I'm sure you've been briefed on exactly how many times, six days ago roughly, that this extension was going to be given without any requirements on when that street was going to be rebuilt, except for in the next two years. It does not take two years to build a street. Our position is pretty simple. We would love for you to vote to delay this, to give us, you know, a very short period of time because we want the development to be successful, to figure out a plan on how to build the street first, which we see is viable and something you can easily do. And we would like to contribute to that effort because we want that to be successful. And if you choose not to delay this vote and you choose to pass this amendment, we're simply asking you to pass it on the condition that the first thing they start construction on is the street. Because our ability to lease our building, our ability to bring in growth and value into downtown Mesa is being affected by this, and we have lost a significant amount of this transaction, not just the transaction, but the momentum that we were trying to build in the city. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Loffler. I think maybe we should respond to Mr. Loffler's concerns. And I know that staff has met with Caliber and assured them, rather than me speaking for you, Mr. ...
No, I think, yeah, I think we need to clarify that the city has met with Caliber, and we've made it very clear to them that it is our intention to move forward with the action today. And immediately following the actions of today, we have a commitment from the representatives from the Grid to sit down with Caliber, to come up with a plan, to find the most convenient way to get the project accelerated, to open up the street. So that commitment was made several times this week. We stand by it. We think that's the best way to, one, delaying the project, we don't think helps move the project along any faster. We think there's an opportunity. They've indicated they're willing to help provide some of their ideas about how we can get the street back in sooner. We obviously need to be with the developer to make sure that meets their needs as far as their construction laydown and logistics. So we think there's a solution here. We just need to get all the parties in a room so they're talking to each other, and we're willing to do that, and we look forward to doing that as soon as possible.
I think the city is in a good position to be a mediator, to try to accomplish the goals of both parties involved in this. And I know that that's going to happen. So speaking for myself, I think it's in the best interest of everyone involved for this project to happen, to get back on track as soon as possible so that the disruption that is part of the construction process can be mitigated and brought to a conclusion as quickly as possible. Any other discussion of this, Counsel, before we ask for a vote? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have no interest in delaying this project. I think there's a lot of repercussions by doing that, not from the development stage, but I do know that, you know, the city component, the city's going to work really hard with both Caliber and the Grid. I know Mr. Wall personally, and he's a man of his word. So we just have to have some time to work this out. So, I mean, this has been sitting dormant for quite a few months, like a year and a half. I'd imagine like that, somewhere in that. So, I mean, it'll just be a big ripple effect for our community, especially our downtown area. So I support moving forward with this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion made by Mr. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Luna. Please cast your votes. Vice Mayor Duff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And again, we look forward to working with everyone who's concerned about this project going forward. Next item off of the consent agenda is Item 10A. Item 10 is to take action on a resolution approving and authorizing the City Manager to enter into a Sales and Purchase Agreement, Development Agreement, Government Property Lease Excise Tax Lease Agreement, also known as G-PLET, for the Development of City-Owned Property Located in Downtown Mesa near the Southeast Corner of South McDonald and West First Avenue for Phase 3 of the Residences on First Project. Do any Councilmembers want to discuss this item? Is there a motion to approve the item? Thank you. We have a motion made by Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please cast your votes. Vice Mayor Duff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That, Item 10A passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 11A and B. Item 11A and B involve the continuation of the Mesa Town Center Improvement District #228 for five years. We will first do a public hearing and then the resolution. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, does anyone in the public wish to speak on this item?
No cards were received, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any Councilmembers that would like to address this item? I know, again, this is an item that's been discussed in our study sessions. I thereby declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion to approve the resolution continuing this improvement district for an additional five years? I see Mr. Thompson's made a motion, seconded by Mr. Haredia. Please cast your votes.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor voted aye. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next are Items 12A through 12F. These involve the terms, rates, fees, and charges for the electric, natural gas, water, wastewater, and solid waste utility services. I'll first call the public hearing on all of these items, and then we can vote on all of these items together. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mickelson, does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item?
I request, Mayor.
Thank you. Do any Councilmembers wish to address these items? I declare the public hearing closed. Unless there's an objection from a Councilmember, I'm going to call Agenda Items 12B through 12F together and call for one motion to approve all of these items related to the fees and charges for electric, gas, water, wastewater, and solid waste services so that we can handle these items as a consent agenda. I see that we have a motion made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Please vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff voted aye. That motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mickelson, I believe we have a couple of people on the phone. Is that correct?
We received two comment cards, Mayor. The first speaker is Mark Lowe.
Is Mr. Lowe on the phone?
He should be on the phone.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lowe, are you there? Mr. Lowe, are you with us?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In the spirit of education, I do hereby offer these words to remind everyone who swore the oath to defend the Arizona State and the United States Constitution from the Declaration of Independence written in Congress, July 4, 1776. The unanimous declaration of 13 United States of America when in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and God's, excuse me, nature's gods, entitle them, and of nature's God entitle them. A decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes. And accordingly, all experience hath shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But by a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing inevitably, excuse me, invariably the same object, evinces the design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. That said, Mayor, I pray that every public servant comes to understand their role in the government and that if needed, realign their thinking and their behavior to comport with the oath they swore when they were hired by we, the people. In closing, I'd like to say that to the Caliber people, masking and lockdowns have unintended consequences in the decisions where folks may choose to operate a traditional office environment. Mr. Giles, where is the data you used to lock down and mask citizens in Mesa, Arizona? Mr. Thompson, if you won't answer First Amendment questions concerning your handling of the people's business, you do not belong in office. Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Merry Christmas. Is there another speaker, Ms. Mickelson?
Mayor, there was a request received, but she is not on the line.
Okay. Thank you. I do have a card as well from our friend Ayush Kotan. Ayush, are you present? There you are. Thank you. Mesa, our Mayor's Youth Committee alumni. Good to have you back.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I will not be citing any of our founding documents, but today I want to... So last year, I had the pleasure of being a part of the Mayor's Youth Committee, and it was an educational experience where I was able to learn about the inner workings of government and how different departments work together. And for the culminating project, my group presented on the Teen Advisory Board, and we worked with the Downtown Mesa Association to create events to incorporate youth within our city. And I want to encourage the pursuit of a Teen Advisory Board, which takes the Mayor's Youth Committee a step further by incorporating youth within our city with policymaking. They'll report directly to the Mayor and City Councilmembers, and we can create an agenda or a list of issues important to youth and pursue those. Additionally, we would like to collaborate with the Downtown Mesa Association to increase youth involvement within the city as well as showing the face of the Mesa youth within... youth involvement within the city, as well as showing the face of the Mesa youth within city matters. I will be more than glad to speak with any of the council members or the mayor individually about my plans or ideas, but I highly encourage that, as one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States, the incorporation of the youth voice is incredibly important in the step forward, and by doing so, we can create a generation that is involved within city government and we can create a new step for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayush. And I'm glad you were here on the meeting. I don't think it was a coincidence, well, maybe it was, that you're here when the Mayor's Youth Committee is here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, we can't comment on items under this agenda item, but we look forward to following up with you. That concludes all the items on our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Freeman, seconded by Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Vice Mayor for voting aye. We are adjourned.